Well, today is the City of Taft Planning Commission Regular Meeting, Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023. We're meeting at City Hall. The City of Planning Commission meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are livestreamed at https://www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaft. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityoftaft.org, made by phone to the City Clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before the meeting. Any comments received will be read into the record. Beginning the regular meeting, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance and then our invocation.
My way.
Yep. Okay, I think I'll go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. A ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And this evening, we have Pastor Joey Pittman here for our invocation.
Thank you, Travis.
Let's bow our heads. God, we're so thankful for your grace and for your mercy. We're thankful for Taft. We pray your guidance, your blessings upon us. Lord, we pray that Taft can be that place, that hidden jewel in the middle of California that people want to come here. We pray for our businesses, our fire department, our police department, our schools, our churches, Lord, that this just becomes that place. Lord, thank you for these men and women that work so hard to help that vision come true. We just ask again your blessings in the name of Jesus. And everybody said, amen.
Amen. Okay. And the first order of business is going to be the seating of a new, appointed Planning Commissioner, so I'm going to turn this over to our deputy clerk to give the oath of office to Dennis Schertz.
You might be down at the podium?
Yeah.
You want me to speak after me?
I broke it. Can I count?
Are you ready?
I've just got it right. We claw. There you go.
I state your name.
I state Dennis Schertz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemn swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and their allegiance.
Allegiance.
Allegiance, thank you.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And discharge the duties that I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dennis. Welcome. Yeah, you get an official.
Not an official?
Yeah.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you. And Lady.
Okay, welcome to the commission. And we will now go to our roll call.
Chairman Orrin is absent. Vice Chair Livingston.
Present.
Commissioner Dowden.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Schertz.
Here.
Always somebody has to be different.
Dare to be different.
Okay. We're now on to the item Citizens Request for Public Comments. Do we have any questions?
No. There are none.
Okay. Then we are now on to the minutes of the May 17th, 2023 Special Meeting, and that is a roll call vote. So do I have any, a motion to approve and a second?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
So, so I'm sorry to interrupt. And Commissioner Schertz, I'm so sorry. Ideally, the second would be from someone who was actually here at that meeting, which I apologize.
I wasn't.
Tonight's your first official one, so that's all. No problem.
I don't remember.
That's why we got a lawyer.
That's why we got a lawyer.
So that's a good question. Who was here at the special meeting?
Good effort.
Right back down as being here.
Okay, then I'll second it.
Thank you.
I think that's what that says.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll second.
I read the notes. Does that count?
Almost.
All right.
Commissioner Dowden.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Schertz.
Yes.
Vice Chair Livingston.
Yes.
Okay, we are now moving on to item four on the agenda. It's our continuing study session on the City of Taft Housing Element Update for 2023 through 2031. Mark?
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Livingston, and welcome Commissioner Schertz.
Thanks, Mark.
As you know, with the Planning Commission, we cover the development side of what happens here in the city, so.
I'm here to help.
Unfortunately, we don't have a project for you to review on your first night, but we have the other side of our projects, which are all the city documents at the state or local level are required to be updated. So we're working on the housing element, and we're hoping to finish it by the end of the year. So I'm going to be going over where we are. Apologize, should be on the first slide, but we're on the last slide. Where we are in updating the document with these housing elements, it's one piece of the overall general plan, which is the general plan of development for the city. You've seen zoning maps and all that. So it's more figuring out, okay, where are you at now? Where were you past cycle of updating the document and all that? So now we're working on this next eight-year window of 2023 to 2031. So all these sections are in the document that was posted and transmitted out. And we had gone over parts of 6.1, 6.2, and some other sections before, but it's been a couple months since we've met. So I'm going to summarize what's been updated since then. Feel free to go back and read up on, it's a strike-through and underlined document. I apologize for all the red, but it helps at least pop out to you what's changed. So let's go over what we're reviewing. It is a pretty straightforward kind of a reporting document. So 6.1, the introduction of any kind of document. We've updated all the references that were to the prior housing element of 2015 to 2023, now to the updated time period. Section 6.1.2, it makes some statements regarding the government code on the purposes of a housing element. They've since updated the state code on housing and their purpose and reason and drive for what they changed. It's more to do with this affirmatively furthering fair housing we've discussed, but we're not going to go over that just yet today. And then further revisions into section 6.1.3, which is all the setup to the remainder of the document. So getting into section 6.1, it's the regional housing need allocation. It's one of many acronyms on the government level, R-H-N-A for Regional Housing Need Allocation. The word you try to pronounce is Rena.
Got it.
And basically what it is, in these eight-year cycles, they used to be five-year cycles, now they're eight. The state tries to do population and housing forecasts and projections, and they spread out across the entire state, but they go region by region with the housing number they want you to hit. And I'll, I don't think it's on here, because I probably made the statement in a prior meeting. Basically, the number they gave us is that in this 2023 to 31 eight-year period, the state believes we need 504 housing units of various kinds during that eight-year period. Now granted, it's still highly optimistic level. Even the number they've given Bakersfield, I think, is 20 some odd thousand. They're building 1,000 a year, so they're going to have about 8,000 and look way short, but they're still growing like crazy like Bakersfield does. So in our situation here, I'm still working off of the prior document and just updating to a more current narrative and data and demographics. So the qualitative needs at section 6.2.1, I updated it because there's been this push of this missing middle housing, which is, there's a quiet trend to push for, it seems like everything's either a single-family house or a pretty sizable apartment complex or condo. You know, it's one or 100. This missing middle is to get the duplexes to 12, 20. That fits on a lot. And you've seen the vacant lots in the middle of town, a nice six-plex, 10, whatever probably would fit in some cases. There's a real push to get a lot of that going. And then also ADUs, which is the accessory dwelling in it. So if you have a single-family home on a lot and you want to put a old granny flat that used to be in the back, they've, over the last 10, 12 years, they've stripped away no age restrictions, so you could rent it to pretty much anybody. No familial connections are required anymore, so there's a push for that as well. And then going through the rest of the data that has been provided by all the Central Valley governments, they found that the median income has risen to $54,851 for Kern County. I think it was just below 50,000 at the 2010 census. And all this is, the numbers you see in the document provided and what I'm referring, the moment in time stops at 2020. Basically, the 2020 census, which isn't what they always do, but that's where all this data comes from, so it's not taken into account 21 through 23 at all. So it's 54,851, and then the extremely low-income folks are at $16,455. And then actually, the current minimum wage, if you worked full-time, gets you more than that $16,455. So, and then they identified at the 2020 census, our extremely low-income households that were at that 16 or below increased from 300 persons to 365, and that's the change from the 2010 to the 2020 census. And then we updated the project needs in section 6222. To get into section 6.3, it is a review and revision of the prior element. This mostly involved the 632 section, which was, we had 19 housing programs in the prior element. It was just an analysis of what occurred during the eight years. One thing you'll be a part of next February, March.
Yes, sir.
Is that this 2023 year will be the last of the prior housing element cycle, and we do a reporting every year at the beginning of the year. So you'll see one of these summaries of what we've done, things already accomplished, but we're updating it in this eight-year document as well. So that's what all of this is involved in section 6.3. Then 6.5 is the biggest chunk and changeover from the last time we've met. So this is probably one area, if you're into demographics, you want to see how our populations increased, or incomes, or any of these categories you see listed here, from the track overpayment for housing, high housing costs due to utilities and other stuff. The housing stock conditions is something that was done back in the 2007 housing element, but I've kept it in because at that point, housing was 16 years younger, if you will. So the 70s and 80s homes weren't as old yet, but now we're 16 years later. We have a big chunk of, you know, other side of 10th that everything's still in good shape, but now they're pushing to be 50 years old.
Yeah.
In the next decade. So keeping at that, we address the senior households, how many people are over 65 now compared to eight years ago, disabled persons, developmentally disabled, female-headed households. One thing that we are not is overcrowded or large family in the City of Taft. Our actual average persons per household dropped from like 2.8 range to 2.4. And just the observational part of it is, I think, a good portion of our city proper area, folks that are over 55, 60, 65 are still here. They're just older, but more empty nested, probably some unfortunate maybe widow situations, if you will. So you're getting single and two-person homes that are outweighing any four, five, six-person homes. And I think there's none at like seven, eight, nine persons per household based on the 2020 census.
In the city limits.
In the city limits. So the density that like our school district see and all that is probably coming from the county areas. So that's one thing you'll see in there. There's tables with all those numbers updated. We handle transitional and supportive housing and emergency shelter, code changes during the last eight-year period from our current Commissioner Panel. Only Vice Chair Livingston and Chairman Orrin were here at that time when we made those changes in 2015. It's basically your alpha house type situations for that. We address farm workers, which doesn't seem too big here, but it looked like also the data kept on it stopped being fairly local. On the last go-around, we did have a number for those that resided in Taft. Now it's more Kern County-wide, Kings County-wide, Tulare County-wide. So it doesn't get too focused, but we still address the farm workers. And then the last one is the newest thing since COVID, but I updated because there's really not quite such a thing as the single-room occupancy housing type anymore. But I think these project room key and home keys, which were the state's effort to convert underutilized hotels and motels for being a place for homeless folks to go. But, and one thing to keep in mind is the scope of homeless is everybody else. You can't pay your rent anymore, and you got to find another place kind of stuff. But it was definitely targeted as our folks on the street homeless that, and room key was the COVID period. Home key is looking like the long-term program that it'll cycle. There's some monies of states or states helping cities who are being proactive and grabbing whatever vacated or near-vacated hotel or motel to provide those rooms as a housing option for folks. So that's that. On to section 6.6, future housing needs. This is a real short section. This gives a real quick snapshot of the overall projections that the state and the current council of governments provided. And they do two different forecasts beyond 2023 to 35 and 46, and you'll see those numbers. The Kern County growth percentage, if you're a big kind of year-over-year compounding of things, is 1% year-over-year for the county and 0.8% for Taft. So they used to be 2% plus when the state was just booming in population. Thankfully, here, it's a little more of an honest projection where it's a little flatter. Because one thing I've updated the commission on as well is that, I don't know if you caught it on the news, I think it was a one-time story each time it comes out, but the state has lost population three years in a row, and it's been well beyond.
Lost customers.
Yeah, it's well beyond the COVID loss and our deaths that have outpaced birth rates and all that. It's definitely the people leaving the state and all that. But we have a little better, flatter projections. It's still growth, but it's not, you know, saying we're going to have 50 million people here next year kind of deal that they used to. So it covers population, group quarters, primarily is prison facilities, but it does include any kind of semi-institutionalized places. So I believe it does count the 60-some-odd TIL students, probably the folks at the ARC, any other type of place that is counted that way. We tend to have close to 100 people in the city beyond the prison facilities that are considered group quarters. I haven't been able to count for all of them, but at least most of it's TIL, and I would think the ARC. And then beyond that, I'm not sure. Then overall households and employment for the Taft and Kern County areas is what I included in the table in section 6.6. And then where I'm at now and where the edits in the document provided kind of stops is section 6.7, which is the land inventory. Couple months ago, I provided a quick update of numbers, taking out things that didn't develop as housing, and then put in other ones that maybe were missed and whatnot. We were still at the same around 2,200 unit number. The last go-around, the Table 23 is still in your document. But one big change that happened from when we adopted the 2015 element to this one, all the density levels, Vice Chair Livingston, from the general plan and zoning needed adjustments. So we did those a year or two after the 15 was accounted for. So there's that little uptick from that. And then there has been some demolitions, so there's a couple more, 19 demolitions over the last eight years. So there's probably some eight lots or so. So what I did was, I'm taking the singular table, I'm going to break it up into three groups to help provide some focus. You have the IFL, which I've written, termed the infill lots, which are primarily in the central square mile of Taft from 119, 10th, Ash to Oak. There's one lot, I think it's up on Terrace or Vista Villa up there, that's in that list, but it's mostly the central area. And they primarily provide single-family or duplex-type situations. And it got us 136 potential unit, 137 potential units. The second group, which isn't in your document yet, I was still piecing it together, and I completed before tonight, and I call them the large lot properties, which are the Colston Construction track on Hillard. There's still 240 some odd lots that could be built out there. There's a big piece of land of kind of behind the Terrace Drive homes to the east of it. There's about a property there that could mathematically produce about 40 homes. And then the remainder is everything on the other side of 119. So you have the airport addition homes, the properties north of those homes unfortunately are owned by BLM still, but it's not part of our farm. That's part of the wastewater treatment plant watering. So it's open, but someone would have to work on negotiations with BLM to start transaction to land out like Colston Beard and Hampton did years ago for other properties. So that produces a lot of the 5,600 units, but there's also the other property those gentlemen own around the industrial area east of Gardner Field Road, buying Kmart and the prison and police. There's about 500 acres there where, when we did the additional update to the general plan in 2017, we rezoned it to allow more commercial activity and residential activity, should someone, whether it's those three gentlemen or someone that I sell to, could master plan it out. So a big chunk of that creates that 5,600 unit potential. But even then, the IFL lots, infills, it was just, could it fit one unit or two just straight up? But on the large lot, there's actually a 20% reduction, if you will, on a lot of that, just because the amount of space needed for roadways. They could lose land to put another school site out there, because that would probably generate enough population to have maybe one more elementary school out that way if something developed. So we only went to 80% max potential of how many units could be built based on the density allowance on that. And then the very last group here, the downtown Taft-specific plan areas, because those densities got changed, and they're different from the citywide, I brought them out as well. And they also have the same, only 80% of maxing out the density produced, 962 units. So total overall, you'll see in the tables, when I plug them all in in September, and we'll be reviewing the pretty much total complete document, you'll see the roughly 6,700, almost 6,800 total units. And the one thing I separate out is those that are R2, R3, or other multifamily zone properties is over 3,500. So that's to show the state, because they're trying to get all these affordable units in every community, and typically they're on the multifamily side, you know, rent limited type stuff, like the senior home apartments over on Eighth and North. That's the capacity we have. So it's far and above that 504 number. It's far and above, I think we're 130, 140 low-income units in that 504 number. It's covered by that. So a lot of the more urbanized areas of the state, they have very few properties available to do new development. So they usually have to utilize ADUs and other reasons, or have to change all their zoning in certain areas to make things happen. We still have the vacant properties where we don't have to jump through as many hoops as some other areas of the state. So this should satisfy the criteria of finding enough land. It's just more, you need to find the developers or the individual folks like a Colston Construction to finish the houses out there. So, so that's one big thing. And then just for the next step, so you know where we're going, if you notice I jumped section 6.4, it basically summarizes what our public outreach will entail. I'll probably work through a similar process as last time. I'll try to make as public as possible as a survey. We had, I think, a good 130 people respond to the one in 2015. And I'm not too concerned about restricting access. I'm okay with Ford City Taftites or South Taft folks, because it, and actually even the state's starting to gravitate a little bit towards addressing some of the county areas that are adjacent to you, but I think since we can accommodate what we need in the city, don't have to go that far. But if somebody who lives in one of those other communities gets to the survey, I'll be cool with that. And then on the face-to-face, we will be having some public meetings outside of this building. Might even do one up at the Veterans Building to talk to the Waken folks to see what their room situation is, if there's some space available. Also, they would be able to provide the Spanish translation as well for any residents up that way. So that's 6.4. It would summarize what we do for this effort. I want to get the document done so I could make a similar presentation to the folks there as well. And then, as I mentioned, 6.7, finish the land inventory, get you guys the additional tables. If you saw, there's a discussion that was area by area, what are the limitations, constraints, or opportunities in each of those. So I'll update that language as well. And then the remainder sections are 6.8, which is the other constraints, which is, is your zoning constrictive? Will it shy away a single home builder or a developer? Are your building codes in line, and are your application processing and fees comparable, high, low? What's the situation there? And then in section 6.9, it takes that earlier section analyzing last elements programs, and we'll create new ones. There's, I think, probably 14 or 15 of the prior 19 will carry over, because it's more of working with developers to bring more affordable housing, market rate housing, and the like. But we probably will add, it's generalizing, kind of just general speak, but encouraging more ADU development, because a lot of our properties have this great alley access. And that's probably an opportune area to put a rentable unit, whether it's for family or the public, that's fine. And then, what was the other one? Sorry, I'm blanking on the other program that was definitely going to be new compared to before, but ADUs will be the main one. And none of the tables in 6.7 assume any ADU or other unique development beyond what the density allows. So we're covering it there, and we don't need to lean on building of ADUs, though. When they do get built, we're able to include it in the yearly summaries that I bring to you. So we'll definitely be encouraging that as well. If there's funding out there, one thing I want to do, which has been pretty successful statewide in the few committees that do it, is they've been getting architects to create pre-approved ADU units that would fit on a typical property. Now, it's not pie in the sky, crazy contemporary designs. It's more, what does 500 square feet look like? Maybe 800, and maybe 1,000, because you can actually build up to a 1,200-square-foot second unit on a home. Oh, that's what it was. The SB 9, it was a bill from 2021 that essentially any single-family lot in the state of California can be turned into a duplex or split in half and put a duplex on each of those halves. So, and it doesn't matter what city, no matter how urban, there are some rural places, but very few that have been, been able to not have to put that into their code. And so there's no assumption of that either to get these numbers. It's straightforward, single-family, single-family, R2s or duplexes, R3s or apartments. So, but those statements will be in there. And, oh, sorry. It's in the text of the document, but I didn't put it here, but I'll bring it up now. You'll see early on in the data, it mentions at 2020 census, we had about 3,400, almost 3,500 housing units in the City of Taft. If you look, I think I provided 2010 as well as 2020 in that table, you'll see we're at 2,500 back at 2010. And part of that is I had to do some digging, and for some reason, the census got antsy? I don't know. Between 2018 and 2019, ever since the 2010 census, they've Between 2018 and 2019, ever since the 2010 census, they've been doing these kind of five-year summaries to try to track every city across the United States and even some of the data they do have for Ford City, South Taft and Taft Heights. But between 2018 and 19, all of a sudden our mobile homes and single units jumped over four hundred each from one year to the next in 2018 or 19. So that's why we have, for whatever reason, over a thousand units more than reality. You'll see in some of the data. So if you attempt to do, check my math on some of it, the math should equal up, but you'll go, you might go, probably don't have thirty-five hundred units in the city. And it's more the census inflated something somewhere. I've already reached out to them. They say their data says it is more the twenty-five hundred number, but the data I've been provided by the COGS and the Central Valley folks and all that, at the 2020 census has us kind of overinflated with housing units that we don't have. So there's one or two notes I put throughout the document. I might add more just to be redundant.
A question about that.
Yes.
If, if you were looking at the RENA numbers, and if every city has been told same thing we have.
Yeah.
That's kind of a, reduces the RENA, doesn't it?
It may, but I think very minimally. The formula for figuring out RENA is quite complicated, but part of it is, so our prior number, I mentioned five hundred and four is this current one. Prior one, I think it was two fifty-four. And we've, or mostly Colston Construction and one other builder has produced about seventy new home units. So seventy out of the two fifty, I think that one hundred and eighty other somewhat carries over.
Okay.
I can't show you the formula because I don't understand the formula, but I think it's one hundred and eighty plus what they think this next eight years it is. So it's a bit of catch-up on what you didn't do and plus more.
Okay.
So I think readjusting numbers probably would shave ten percent off that number, so maybe fifty units at best.
If I, if I still remember, compared to every place else, the fact that we have the available land without any tricky accounting is a positive.
Yes.
It's not one of those things that's going to get us in trouble with the state.
No, I, I think we'll be okay. There's one area that I still need to work on, and I'm going to be working with our GIS folks, is this affirmatively furthering fair housing. It's trying to address whether you have these great discrepancies in what your demographics look like. So, you know, we're mostly a combination of Caucasian and Latino communities, the areas that are really high in their percentage, which for most of the tables I've looked at and the mapping, what, because the state provided the data, it's, they provide it, we're going to map it out and see how it works. But for the most part, in the city limits, we're not on that excessively high Latino population. It definitely is more so in the three county communities. So that's the, one of the main things, other than finishing those other sections I mentioned. This analysis or at least getting the maps before us and describing what the maps are showing shouldn't create too much of a issue or over-analysis by the state, housing, community development, who will review this at the end of the process. They'll probably still have their comments and questions and whatnot. But we also have all the units to accommodate the different income levels that they are expecting of housing units. So I think we're covered as far as what we did last time, and we're doing more updating and doing this additional analysis the state's looking for. So I think we're at a good spot. September should have a more complete document. And also moving forward on the environmental, which I don't anticipate to be overly complicated because we're not having to change any zoning or general plan or anything that usually triggers deep dive environmentals, even with this affirmatively furthering fair housing. If anything comes up out of that, I don't think it'll be too major, other than it just gets discussed in that environmental document. But I think we'll have a fairly straightforward negative declaration related to that like last time because we're not having to do too many changes or jump through hoops to meet our RENA number. So I think we're in a good spot. I hope to have this document done in that September meeting. And September would be the public meetings for the outreach with folks in Taft and beyond. And then also getting the environmental stuff out there because, because we do this general plan update, I mean, this housing element update, it's essentially a general plan update. So that requires what they call consulting with the local tribes. But they've all been good. They are very responsive, but this is actually one corner of the state that no tribe is necessarily claiming or saying that there's sensitive things out here. So, you know, we send it all the way to San Manuel, which is more San Bernardino. We send it to the folks that are more Ojai, Santa Barbara, because they're adjacent to our county. But they say, thank you for reaching out, but this is not within our tribal range, so we have no comment. So we've had a couple other projects where we've done this process before, where we're just getting the updated list because their tribal contacts tend to change and we'll notify them. But that'll be September, October, November, going through the whole tribal process, environmental, and doing the public outreach where we should be good for a November meeting. If at worst, it might be just kind of back-to-back where planning commission in December and the second meeting of council in December will be wrapping this up and it goes out to the state for their review. They may have comments where we come back in March of next year that says, answer these questions or address this in your document. So be ready for that as well. Because they'll, this is what they do, so they fine-tooth comb it. So we'll see what their comments are regarding this. So that ends my presentation for now and available for any questions or any thoughts or ideas you have moving forward.
Any questions?
Nope.
Not right now. I think I'm going to wait for, you know, that last minute when you've got it all put together so I can cause trouble.
Just to cause trouble then.
And the other thing too is anybody's welcome to comment on it. Because when we go through the environmental part, things will be published, both online, a folder now in both lobbies, just to make sure there's a copy in each one. And people can comment one way or the other, or just basic questions, what does this mean? All the acronym alphabet soup stuff that ends up in these documents, I can answer all that as well. But I just hope, if you can, encourage others to come out to the meetings when the notices go out. For the most part, they'll be in the driller and online for the noticing. We don't mail to every resident in the, or a property owner in the city for these. So there, there won't be that direct noticing like we've done on other projects. So we'll do what we can to go through the chamber because they have one of the biggest distribution lists, but just let people know when these meetings get scheduled, just share it with them, see if they could show up or tell their friends. And we welcome everybody. And we'll make sure there's waters and maybe some cookies to keep you energized through it because I know this could be pretty dry. But we definitely are looking for folks' input. And the main thing is, is do people see the same thing as I'm seeing as kind of the technical person of, is this land available? Are you okay with, you know, multifamily going downtown? We had this whole discussion all last year. We're looking to bring more residents closer to downtown. That's probably would help if we could get the population to grow more customers that are one, two blocks away from center street businesses. I think that's probably one thing that would help with everybody down there, both to fill the vacant spots and still support the longstanding businesses. So, and then, you know, the infill, how do they feel about that? You know, a lot of the lots are on schools, they're all Santa Media, Lucar, Woodrow Warren area. And then do people even notice that we have all this land on the east side of one nineteen? And there's some potential out there, just if we can snag a pretty good developer that at least can map it out initially and then get some home builders. And I have reached out to the Kern County Home Builders Association person. I should be meeting with them in the next month or so. And hopefully that will drive a little bit of the similar kind of outreach to that segment of home building, like we've done for a lot of this commercial stuff that's brought Jack in the Box and the like. So we haven't really done that on the housing side, trying to really, really reach out. But since it seems like they're very focused on Bakersfield and the towns just nearby, I'm going to do what I can to get someone to, if the Colstons are looking to, you know, sell the rest of that track to have another home builder finish it off, we'll do what we can to help make that happen and make the connection. So, and then any of the new stuff that could be on the east side of one nineteen. That's where the next growth will be. Westward is a no-go because that's all very much oil land. There is some private properties on the east side of one nineteen that could bring those thousands of units that I mentioned. Definitely would come slow, but I definitely want to get it in some developers' hands that could hopefully map that out and then the commission can help guide all that as they come in project by project.
Do you remember how many units that proposed development on the east side of the cemetery was?
It's in that, I'll just give you my number.
Yes, fine. That's all.
I don't know if I'll be able to pick it up real quick.
That's next to a park. It's got a access on and off.
It is, it's three different properties, or I'm sorry, two different properties. And it looks like they were really low.
Right.
When I looked at what was approved ten, twelve years ago, they didn't really max the density out, but what I was able to map out is pushing about two hundred and seventy units because one is R-one, the other one's R-two. So that's, you know, just the math of it is about two hundred and seventy units between the two properties. So someone's able to, they would probably have to max it out, so their costs and pro forma and all that.
Still.
Because a big thing over there, there is a different segment of the whole drainage system here of Sandy Creek that cuts through there. So there's some drainage improvements that probably makes a lot of the cost sheets go nuts and they can't afford it after that. But if someone who's a little more savvy on drainage, I'll just put it that way, you know, whether it's a pipe under a street instead of keeping an open channel, you know, there's different solutions. And I think that's what held up the prior developer before the last recession. That was the other part too, is they got approved, I think, a year or two before the oh-eight recession and everybody got upended with that stuff and everything expires. So fortunately, we do kind of have to start over again with some of those properties, but I think they would have been caught up on the environmental stuff with the leopard lizard and all that stuff that goes on out there. That'll be one thing I'll have to work with each developer is those environmental requirements that, still, that's why the Hillard homes took a while. And they're going to take a little while again. They always have to renew their approval for the, addressing the species that are out there, potentially out there. So we're all surrounded by the open land we have, you know, we have our kit foxes and the ground squirrels and the lizards. So there's a way to get through it, but we just need to get the folks that are a little more experienced with that and it might move a little quicker.
Okay.
And I'll work with whoever's owning the land now to connect them to the right people to get it going.
Sounds good.
I think some of those infill lots, you know, certain areas you might get a little more pushback than others. Say if you're going to go build a fourplex, you know, next to a single family, some areas people might be like, ah, I don't want a two-story house.
Right.
And I can't go in my backyard without, you know, being, feel like I'm looked down on, you know.
Yeah.
It'll mess with their.
I don't know how much.
Privacy a little bit, but, I mean, present each one as they come and say, hey, here's what we want to do.
Anything under four units won't come before you.
Yeah.
But I've worked with someone who's looking at one of those really narrow lots, more than downtown area. And they're, they came up with a one-story solution where it's a very, I don't want to say shoebox because it turned out pretty well, but the main units up front, they have a five hundred square foot ADU and a garage facing the alley. They haven't started constructing, but I believe they do have their permit, one seventeen? So when that goes through, it'll be a good demonstration where, when it's done, if you haven't noticed it, it's not far from the business area of downtown. But if that goes in, that could be a template for other of those skinny lots we have throughout town. But yeah, a two-story, that'll be a potential issue, but we, I do discuss with each builder the options they have, you know, go for a duplex, they could still make it one story. But if they try to push it where they could do, because you can do a duplex and do the ADU, so you can, in a way, get three units out of some of these lots. But if they're capable or not, you know, that's the other part, you know, they could be just strictly, they got their template, single family, and they just tack on five hundred square feet for the other unit, which is fine here, you know, we still got the oil fields and people needing rental housing for short stays for whenever their time period is here, work in the field. So there's still a need.
I think that the infill that we've had, going all the way back at least into the seventies, a number of those lots, that's what they got turned into were triplexes.
Yeah.
You know, I can think of one on Fourth, one on Warren and others. And I don't know if the, if the people who are there in those areas are likely to be as opposed to it as they would in other locations, because the central portion of the city is already mostly a mix of multi-unit, either bungalow types or two, duplexes or triplexes already. Seems to me like that that should be a relatively easy one. And because it comes to you and not us, the, the kind of opposition might be a little bit different as opposed to something at a public meeting.
And feel free to go down the list when you start seeing the ones that are over like a four unit. It's partly because they're probably a seventy-foot wide or a hundred-foot wide lot and they're able to get eight to ten to twelve or whatever, maybe. Nobody's come to me with any proposal like that, but if you're curious about it, everything's listed by the assessor parcel number, not address, partly because half of vacant properties don't have addresses, so it's easier to go by the assessor number. If you have your means to look it up, have at it. But definitely reach out to me if you're curious about where a particular property is and what the potential is for it. We could discuss that or save it for a time we're discussing this again, maybe the September meeting. But you'll, we'll see all those tables in the updated document come the September meeting. So before that meeting, if you want to discuss anything, let me know. Otherwise, save it for the open comments like we're doing now to discuss it.
You know, it's, it's also interesting that if you look in Bakersfield Oak Street towards downtown, in between Truxton and Twenty-Second or something, you wouldn't really notice, I don't think, unless you paid attention, that there are bungalows, multifamilies, large, I mean mansion-sized, single families all running through that area. And I think it's a matter of design more than it is a matter of, of density. You know, the thing that we need to encourage when we're dealing with that is just thoughtful design.
A little bit of style.
Yeah, exactly. Nothing, just don't slap something together.
Yeah.
Okay, unless anybody has any questions or more comments, I'm going to move on to our next item, which is item five. Got anything to report, Planning Director?
Just real quick, since it's been a couple meetings, if you haven't driven over east of one nineteen on Gardner Field, the Dollar General project has already poured their slab and are already erecting the block walls. So you can see that project there. We are moving forward with the tractor supply that will be occupying a part of the Kmart. This will come before you, hopefully at that September meeting, maybe October. And you'll see that, that, so it'll be a good thing for the shopping center and that stuff's moving forward. So those are the two main projects that are on our radar, under construction and proposed.
Great.
Moving forward pretty well.
And then the Samuna, item six on our agenda, city attorney statements.
Thank you. No statements.
Thank you. Any comments from the commissioners?
None.
None for me.
Good.
Okay. Then we are moving to item eight, which is the usual identification of representative to the city council. Sort of had been a tradition here for years now that I end up doing it. If you would like to ever do a presentation.
If you're meetings, yeah.
I'm just letting you know.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm not trying to dominate it, it's just convenient because I'm here anyways. So unless anybody feels like they need to do the report this, this next meeting, I'll be happy to go ahead and take the responsibility. Okay, I guess all those noms were yeses.
Yes.
In that case, I just need a motion for adjournment.
I'll motion.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're closed. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.